Good evening, everyone. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the September 3rd City of Wyndham Council Meeting. Tonight, we'll start with the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the council meeting of August 20th, HRA Board, August 14th, EDA Commission, August 19th. License applications include exempt gambling permit for bark, October 15th, amplification permit, flood volunteer appreciation event, September 20th, that's at Teagles Park Shelter House. Also included are the regular bills.
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Scott, to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Department heads. We don't have any for that part of it. Next, you'll see in the packet that there is a resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Denise Nichols for honorable and devoted public service to the City of Wyndham. Someone care to introduce that resolution?
I would introduce the resolution.
I'll second.
And that was introduced by Marv and seconded by Jim. And prior to the vote, I will read this. "A resolution expressing sincere appreciation to Denise Nichols for honorable and devoted public service to the City of Wyndham, Minnesota. Whereas the City of Wyndham wishes to express grateful recognition and appreciation to Denise Nichols for her untiring and valuable service faithfully rendered to the City of Wyndham commencing in June of 1998 and ending in September 2024. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Wyndham, Minnesota as follows. The City Council on behalf of its members, city officials, employees of the City of Wyndham, and the citizens of this community extends to Denise Nichols its expression of appreciation for serving the city well and its best wishes for the years to come. That a copy of this resolution be incorporated in the official records of the City Council of the City of Wyndham and a copy presented to Denise Nichols adopted this third day of September 2024." Roll call, please.
Benson.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Grunig.
Quaid.
Yes.
And that passes 100%. Denise?
I'm just, I'm not prepared at all.
That's good.
Is it? I don't know. I want to thank the city for all the opportunities that I had and that I was able to bring a lot of things to the community, writing grants and being able to help with several departments with the, from the fire department to the library, especially the rec area. That was something that I had helped designing, but designing all the fundraising for and was able to get that for the community. The work in the library, the regional, the regional radio and grants that we got so that the county and everyone was able to use those grants. And so hopefully it has an impact on the city and with my other work within the city with residents and businesses, I feel honored and happy to be able to have done that for all those years.
You know, one other thing too, and you mentioned your ability to rent grants. And Denise was in charge of that in her department and she fulfilled that very nicely for the City of Wyndham and once again, we appreciate that work as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all again. Thank you to the city.
I think you left out a lot of things, Mayor.
Well.
I had a little bit of a list.
There you go.
So, thank you for all your work at the airport. I mean, you're the primary person on the airport. You know, you had just done a renovation when I came in 2006 and you were involved in that and you've seen that all the way through for 20 years and that's very much appreciated. We're finding out how much work that actually was now that we're getting all the grants and emails and stuff on that, so. But your organization and all the licenses for everything from amplification permits to liquor permits, council packets by the hundreds, literally, payroll, all the stuff for telecom. I mean, you've seen really a big change in the city and I've greatly appreciated. You mentioned the Wyndham rec area, but you were also, I believe, on the community center planning group, so very instrumental with that. So, thank you for all that. I do really appreciate it and wish you the very best.
That was a lot of good stuff. Unfortunately, we have to continue with the city council meeting, right? So, we have a resolution, very fitting, accepting equipment for the public library from friends of the library. Denise probably did that before she left too. So, with that, the council wished to take action. I'll introduce the resolution.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Dennis and seconded by Marv. And I forgot what that was.
$64.11.
Okay. Okay. And.
Some storage table.
Sure. Great. Storage table was the item. And we appreciate that very much. I'll ask for a roll call.
Grunig. Esplin. Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
That resolution carries. Thank you to the friends of the library. We have a public hearing now. Tiffany will come up and explain to us. The council passed a resolution to publish this last meeting and that's been duly served and noted, so Tiffany's in place and she'll tell us the work we have before us.
Thank you, Mayor. Tiffany Lamb, EDA Director. We have two separate actions that we're requesting tonight. The first is to hold the public hearing on the proposed residential tax abatement. We did discuss that at the last meeting and have the call for public hearing at that time. Just as a reminder, this is for 1955 Bud Road. It's a home being put in by Preferred Choice Homes and it is an estimated value of $210,000, which is significantly under the existing cap for the program of $320,000. With that, the total proposed tax abatement over a five-year period is $6,050.75 based on this year's tax rates.
Okay. Does the council have any questions for Tiffany before we open the comment? Seeing none, we will now open the public, public comment part of the hearing. And that is now open for public comment. Anybody from the public wish to comment? Any comments from the public? I will ask Steve or Tiffany, have we received any written notification for or against?
No, we have not.
Thank you. One more time, any public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed and now the council will consider the next step.
Yes. So, the second step is that there's a resolution before you to approve the tax abatement for the new home. Once again, that's being constructed at 1955 Bud Road here in Wyndham.
Any questions anywhere in agreement from the council? Okay, you have a resolution before you that was fully noted in the packet and no comments were made, the council wished to take action.
I would introduce the resolution approving the tax abatement for 1955 Bud Road.
I'll second it. Resolution introduced by Marv and seconded by Scott. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Esplin. Nelson. Grunig. Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
That resolution carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question.
If Tiffany can answer this or not, but I've seen a lot of homes and I feel like we've heard a lot in this area. Do you have any clue like how many empty lots are left to build on in that area? It seems like that's really been a good development there.
It has been. We've had actually a few of these fill in since I came along. I couldn't give a quantity exactly on where that's at, but I could look into that and get back to you on a specific quantity for that. They have been popular lots, however, so that's been good to see.
That brought up another question. I understand that we have some of the first ones coming back on tax rolls. Could you explain that a little bit?
Yes, that is accurate. So, it is a five-year program. It has been renewed once over its term. It has three-year renewal periods and we're actually coming up on basically the first time for those first homes that were first brought onto the program when it was initially adopted, actually coming back onto the tax rolls. And so that's really good to see because then we won't see as much of an impact from it. When you start anything up, when you are providing an incentive of tax abatement to residential home builders, then you are essentially removing those out of your levy for the increased value. And so now we're starting to see those come back on. And so we'll essentially see a trade-out of which properties are in the program and we'll see a stabilization of what is actually happening with the program unless we happen to have either a sharp increase or decrease of what we're seeing for, for home building.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Next topic is the City of Wyndham, Cottonwood County leases, law enforcement center and the former fire hall. Steve, did you want to address that or?
Yep, there's just two, there's two items. One is the city leases space at the law enforcement center from the county for our police department. And that's the first part of the memo here that you see that we've had, we have an agreement that's in place. It goes, it was 20 years, it was signed in 2012, it goes to 2032. In that lease, there was a provision for rate increases at the, not the last county board meeting, but the one prior. The county did raise it 5%. And so the amount that they're requesting for 25 and 26 would go from 2,050 a month to 2,152, which is an increase of $102.50 or $1,230 for the year, not, that, that is the lease amount. So, that's just the increase. In my head, it said amount of 1230 per year increase, but it didn't make the paper. My fingers thought, my mind had it. So, so that's the first, that's the first piece. So, if anybody's got any questions on that lease with the county for that space, please let me know and I've attached the communication from the county about that amount for the raise.
Council have any questions? Pretty straightforward. Okay?
That'll be on the next item. Yep, this, this is just for the LEC portion. Yep, and we will talk about that on the next one.
About $25,000 a year that we're paying them and we're paying more than they are paying even us for one month payment, you know, and that's, you know, kind of what I'm looking at.
I think that was pertinent to bring that up at this point because it's an, what, how much is going to be offset? We do have a motion in a second.
We don't have any motion yet.
We're waiting for a motion in a second. Unless you have other questions.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I would second.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Marv to approve the, I'm sorry, was this a two-year lease?
Yes.
No, it's, it's a 20-year lease, but the rate adjusts every two years.
Okay, thank you. So, we're tied in longer than you think. Up until what year, Steve, at 32, I thought?
Yep, yeah, 2032.
2032.
Yeah. And there are, there are termination provisions by either party for that lease. If you had a space and you wanted to get out of it, you, you could provide that out in here.
Motion still on the table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, former fire hall.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. The next, next item, so that kind of got me when I got this note from the county about the law enforcement center lease, it kind of got me thinking about the space that the city leases, the county. So, the old fire, the old fire hall space, so six bays, we lease several of those bays to the county. Wyndham PD uses several of them. The planning department parks their truck in there and has some files in there. They use a couple of the bays, the old, or former ambulance bays out back in those individual garages, those are used by telecom. But we do rent bays to the sheriff's department for some of their equipment in the old fire hall portion. And as I noted in the lease, we went into that in 2017, as the new fire hall was built and we moved into that, that vacated space in the old fire hall. There was a number of, oh, let's say proposals to refit that space and use it for other things. At that time, the council did have a subcommittee work on it. I believe Mr. Grunig was on that along with Mr. Byam. And those ideas were vetted, but there really wasn't any action the council took to, you know, either fit it out for new PD space or turn it into telecom offices or relocate the city hall, council chambers. Those were some of the ideas. So, that really didn't kind of come to fruition through that process. So, we had that empty space and then there was quite a bit of ask, you know, by PD, telecom, and then by the sheriff department, hey, could we utilize that space until, you know, a more formal use is found? So, what we did is we entered into a lease with the county sheriff's department to lease some of that storage space. And because it was meant to be short-term, because we were looking at that reuse of that space, there really wasn't a end date written into the agreement nor was there an adjustment on the rent. So, the rent has been the same, $200 a month since 2017. And so, as I brought that up and looked at it, I thought we should probably be looking at raising this rent, that space as well, if we're going to continue that rental agreement. And the lease, I did attach a copy of the lease. Because it was meant to be, kind of, it says initial term was going to run through, it just didn't have a end date on it. There was also no, as I mentioned, no rent escalator. So, what we would have to do is amend this lease or terminate it. We could terminate it with the intent of renewing it with the county. We could terminate it with not intent to renew with the county. Or we could approach the county and say, okay, we're, we would like to amend the lease to include either a new rate or a clause that allows that negotiation for increasing or changing the rent amount. So, in looking at some of the history of what they, this county had changed our LEC space, just percentage-wise from year to year since 2017. So, when I put this together, that's, I suggested that we might want to look at, you know, something between 225 and 250. I know it's not a huge dollar amount, but it's about the same percentage amount increase as they've increased our LEC rent from 2017 to current. So, that's how I came up with that, that guide. So, but I'm certainly open to your thoughts, suggestions, comments.
Council comments?
One question, Steve. Do both these leases, they include the utilities, correct?
Yeah, yeah, those, they do include the utility. So, we pay utilities, the heat and the light and that on the old fire hall and they pay it on the LEC. They also have some other benefits at the LEC. I think they get some part-time technical assistance help with the computer system because they, they have some shared services over there. So, there's a little bit more into their arrangement than is in ours. Ours is pretty much just simply space.
If the council's going to enact this, it should be specific with a dollar amount. And as Steve pointed out, the 225 to 250 per month was, I guess, similar to the percentage increases that the LEC had with us.
Since that time, 2017 forward.
Council thoughts? First, if we want to do, I'd like an amount in the motion if you're willing to do that.
I'll make a motion to raise the rent up to 250 per month according to what the raises are or part of what they raised us and we raised back. So, we were not over-raising, but we're still getting some equity out of it.
You said you had a.
Hold on, we haven't had a second to that motion. Is there a second to raise that and set it at 250?
I will second that.
Now we can have discussion. And Dennis, you're.
Yeah, when you had a committee some time back, what were, what was, what was the result for that?
You want to jump in or?
Well, I think with every option that we looked at, it created quite a bit of revitalization to the, to the building, which would require a bathroom and, and walls and it was, it was a remodel. So, I guess I'm not sure exactly why it, it didn't go anywhere, but nobody specifically was interested enough to put that in their budget, so.
Yeah, I believe it was, it was a lot of cost and it was also, there were several competing interests. There was some discussion in relation to it about the old fire hall, but there was also discussion about the building, the building that we're in. Because the basement is not in great condition, the roof on this was not in very good condition. And so, if we're going to move the council chambers and EDA office or planning and zoning office and move that, what do we do with this old building? I think there was, there were a number of other things involved in that discussion as well. And so, the way it just kind of panned out is police were happy to get some rental orders, some space to put their, park their cars in, have evidence or, you know, stolen bikes, things like that, to have inner speed trailers in there. Sheriff's Department, we rented them a little bit of space. Planning and zoning was happy to have a spot to put their pickup and get some of their files out of the way. And so telecom got, as I mentioned, the old ambulance spaces out here, so that satisfied some of their need because they could put inventory in their garage over there and move their vehicles over here. So, it just kind of worked out. Everybody got a little something of what they wanted and it solved a lot of our problems with what we ended up doing. And so, I think that's the reason probably, it just, it didn't work it, go down the line any further is just for those reasons.
It really is nothing more than garages at this point. And the thought was to create offices also, which required quite a bit of updating, you know, electrical and all of that stuff in a separate service, so.
Any other comments on the motion?
When you're talking renovations, I know it, there's nothing free, I know that. Look at our government. But dollar-wise, what are you talking? I mean, I know the PD at one time had wanted to come over here and renovate, whatever. At one time, you probably remember when PD was over here years ago, but I don't know, you, I guess when you figure the $25,000 a year we're paying them, we could maybe eliminate that and let them have their $2,500 a year that they pay us.
If you're looking at cost, I think one of the preliminary estimates the chief had done a few years ago was in that 6-700,000 range. And that was before the last round of construction inflation. So, if you're looking at a million dollars, your, you know, debt service payment cost on that would be somewhere around that $75,000 number, which is triple what we pay on that lease a year, so.
I had conversations with the police chief on this and I think he was talking slightly over a million dollars the last time I talked to him about it.
Any further comments? Seeing none, we're going to take a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That carries four to one. Okay, thank you for that discussion. Okay, airport. Of course, this is going to be Steve's.
Sure.
So, let you track.
So, we've got our capital project for this year, which is seal coating and crack filling out at the airport. This, there's two pieces here. One of is accepting the grant for it. The project is 90% federally funded, 5% state-funded, 5% coming from our local airport budget. The total project cost is about 132,000 if I remember correctly. 132,290. The city's share of that is 6,614, state 6,614, federal is 119,000. The first action requested is acceptance of the state and federal grant for the project, which would fund that 90 plus five, so 95% of the project. The second item then, if that grant is accepted, the second item then is to approve the contractor quote for the project. And that would be the solicited bids, our airport engineers did, and they're, from the bid tab are recommending that Farner asphalt sealers do the work for $97,090. But those are the two items. So, I guess we can take. are the two items. So I guess we can take it one at a time. If you'd like to discuss the resolution first, I can answer any questions on that. This is part of the annual funding that we get from the airport through this, through the federal government for these types of projects.
Someone care to introduce the, this is a resolution? I'll introduce the resolution, calling for the grant.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Dennis, seconded by Jim. Any further discussions? What was the amount we budgeted for this part of it, Steve? Can you recall?
The, the city, the, the city's share of this will be $6,614, and it'll come from the general fund of the airport. So we put a little money in their kitty every year for operational, and they make a little money on gas sales, things like that. So they do have the money in the budget to fund us.
That was my question. Any others? Okay, we'll ask for a roll call.
Quaid?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yep.
Grunig?
Yes.
Espin?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Second part of it, the engineer's recommendation was to, for the city's share was $6,614. And that would be, we are going to, by motion, hire Farner Construction.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, Jim, seconded by Scott, to approve the contractor selected by the Airport Commission of Farner Construction. And that one is just a motion. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Now the concrete pavement repairs. Oh, that was the Farner one. Well, I looked at my notes here, and I screwed up. Personnel. Donna's here. You have a hiring recommendation for us today?
Yes. So as you know, Denise Nichols previously retired. The, her position was posted both internally and externally, and we selected six candidates for interviews. And after interviewing the six selected candidates, we recommend Lisa Arnt for the Finance and Information Analyst position effective nine sixteen of twenty-four, starting at step seven. Lisa's been with the city of Wyndham for the past eighteen years and has been a very valuable member of the administrative staff. She's interested in continuing her professional growth within the office, and this promotion is an opportunity for her to do that, for her to advance while gaining skills in, in the, in, in the office. So that does open up her position, obviously. So she'll transition into this new role as time allows, until we're able to backfill her position. So that will be advertised starting in the shopper this week, so on Saturday.
Well, that was brought up. Do we need to advertise? Do we need to make a motion to advertise, Steve?
You, you don't need to make a motion. It's a budget position. It's really no change. So as long as you don't want to eliminate a position, we're okay to go.
I think we're okay. Thank you. And so this would be appropriate to, for a motion to hire Lisa Arnt at step seven. And I do appreciate that promotion from within and all the hard work that she will do.
I would make the motion to promote Lisa Arnt to the Finance and Information Analyst position.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jenny, seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have some, Personnel Committee has reviewed this, Supervisory Personnel Extraordinary Hours. Marv, are you going to tackle that one?
Personnel Committee met and discussed the recent flooding and, and all the hours that some of our supervisors put in managing the flood and the issues surrounding it. And unlike the hourly wagers that get paid overtime, supervisors do not. And, and while some of it comes with the territory, it was kind of felt that this was way beyond expectation. And with some of the supervisors were just there all the time and working sixteen, eighteen hours a day. So then the thought was that what we could do to help make it right, and the thought was, well, convert their hours that they worked during the emergency period to vacation at seventy-five percent. So that's the recommendation of personnel.
Questions from the council?
I agree. We, we need to do something for them. And then what about some of the other personnel that we have that are at their jobs many hours longer than they should be, like some of the other spots we got here on our committee that, I, I won't go into naming names, but we've got some supervisors that, that go above and beyond their jobs in their, in their profession, taking care of their, their buildings and stuff like that. Just would, is that going to affect them guys at, at all, though? Or is there anything we can do for some of them people that stay longer? Let's say you got a guy on salary that, but he's there eighteen-hour days and making sure Sundays they're there putting in time. You know, I mean, just the arena guy for one, Tim, he's in there putting many different hours in. And he, he did do a lot above and beyond for the flood department, but on a normal basis, he's above and beyond in his, in his profession and taking care of his buildings, too. And there's other buildings that areas that supervisors do that. Is there anything we can do them, for them people, too, though?
Yeah. Like Steve just said, in my ear was they, they do have flex time that they're able to use throughout the year. And plus, supervisory positions don't come on a forty-hour week. And I think that's, that's part of it. When you're a supervisor, a department head, you realize there's going to be extra hours. And that's why it's entitled extraordinary. You know, if, if a supervisor puts in a fifty-hour week, if, pick on the water department, they had a significant water leak or something, they had ten hours. If he takes a couple hours off on Friday, I have no problem with that. You know, and I think that's, that's, they still submit every hour they put in on their time card. And Steve would be the first one with your review.
Yeah, I tell people to take-
And tell people to take that time off. Okay, so I think, yeah, and we have several here that, that do a lot of work, and we, we understand that, you know. But, you know, if, if they're putting in sixty hours in a forty-hour week, maybe we need help for them. I think that's when it comes up, you know, for those situations. So I'm not trying to be the bad guy. That's not the intent. It's extraordinary is why this fits, I think, within that title. If that makes sense, Scott.
It does, but I just wanted to mention that we did get it out on the table for other people.
No, appreciate that. Any other comments? Okay, does the council wish to approve this?
I would make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Marv, seconded by Jim to approve the extraordinary time. And these, these hours, I'll just say, these are not times, time and a half. These are actual hours. Okay? And it's just seventy-five percent of that as well, where the hourly employees, of course, were paid the time and a half. So trying to do this in fairness, too. Any other comments? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Same sign, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. Mutual aid agreement between the city of Wyndham and Conwood County.
Yeah, we had a lot of city Conwood County things tonight. So when we were going through the FEMA paperwork related to the flood, the county actually had their FEMA meeting first, and the FEMA rep said, oh, well, you do have a mutual aid agreement between the city of Wyndham and Conwood County for that provision of that kind of aid. And said, why, yes, we do. In 2019, or twenty, I think it was 2019, when we had the last flooding event, we had a mutual aid agreement in place. And that was a five-year agreement that needed to be renewed while that expired in July of 2024. And as you know, we had the flood in June and July of 2024. FEMA said, yep, nope, you're good. You've got a mutual aid agreement in place. But county engineer sent it over and said, it, it is expired. It's a five-year agreement, and we're asking to renew it. And so that's something we would want to do and maintain that relationship, but also our ability to work with FEMA and claim reimbursement on those things. So what it is, I attached a copy of the mutual aid agreement that we had in place. The highlighted things are the things I, or Nick and I added. So it's very minimal what we added or amended. Just other personnel and equipment is listed. Landfill, we didn't have that on the original one, but obviously we used that as part of the flood. So we added landfill, public works engineering, and emergency management, obviously. So we had those things in there. So, and then the other change was at the backside duration of the agreement. Instead of having it expire after five years and have to renew it, what we did is just put it so the agreement is in place and would be supersated with a new agreement or terminated by either party in ninety days. Both the county attorney and city attorney looked at it. They were okay with that. The county did bring it up today, and they did approve it. So I do have a signed copy on my desk if the city approves it this evening.
Without too many questions, would the council like to approve that? I think it's a good call to have that.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement between Conwood County Mutual Aid and the city of Wyndham.
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jenny. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move over to old business on the second page of our agenda. And I do have some information that was handed out to each of the council members. And it will be provided to the local newspaper and KDOM. And I would like to read this. This is a letter that was received, yep, on Thursday, August 29. And this is from Mary Lefler, Minnesota District Seven, Project Manager in Mankato. I, this was to Steve Nasby, Wyndham Mayor, was copied in. "Steve, as previously discussed, Mendot won't replace signal systems without the correct prorated cost participation that is determined by ownership of the intersection legs. Currently, the system, signal system replacement estimate is $840,000, which requires a cost participation of $420,000 from the city and $420,000 from Mendot. If the city cannot fund the project in 2025, Mendot is willing to change the year of the project to a year when the city can fund their 50% portion of the signal. However, the $420,000 represents the estimate for 2025 construction. If the project, if the project moves out, we would likely see an increase in cost due to inflation and can provide that updated number to you if you identify an estimated year to plan for. If the city won't pay for their portion of the signal, Mendot will forego the signal replacement at 10th Street and plan to install stop signs on 10th Street while allowing Highway 60 to continue through the inner intersection unimpeded, two-way stop control intersection type. However, with this change in traffic control, Mendot would anticipate an increased delay for users on 10th Street. We can perform a traffic analysis to determine the expected delay and crash performance of the intersection under this scenario, and then provide this information to the city to aid in your decision-making. I understand the city is frustrated with the increased costs associated with the new signal design standard. However, Mendot must comply with the design requirements set by the Federal Highway Administration. Please let me know if the city would like to, the project move to a different year to accommodate city funding, or if we should proceed with the traffic analysis of the revised stop sign configuration above. Please note, we are planning to process the planned specifications and estimate package this winter, and a timely response from the city is preferred to keep this project on schedule. Please know, we are a partner in this and want to have the appropriate data to make an informed decision. Thanks, Mary Lefler, Mendot District Seven Project Manager." I'd like to comment on this first, if you wouldn't mind. And I was in and visited Steve when I opened this email this morning. And I stopped specifically for this reason this morning. I am so sick and tired of what Mendot is doing to the city of Wyndham right now. And I would like to respond to Mendot and tell them, or ask them the question, when are we going to get our four lane back? That's the question that was posed in the resolution that we had in agreeing at that time for the cost with Mendot and the okay to discuss the purchase of the properties within the city of Wyndham outside of the city right away. And that was very clear. And we come back with a price increase. It was just, what, thirty or forty-five days ago, we received correspondence from Mendot that they have to do a crash study and all this stuff to be able to tell us if the four lane would work now. And now they're asking us, or that they will do the crash study, or the crash study in this letter. Why haven't they done the first one that we requested and get that dang thing open on the south part of 6071? And Ms. Lefler, unless the council tells me not to, is going to get a, get a phone call tomorrow. And then it's going to go over her head, and I'd like to relay that to her. Because it's going to go to our congressional people in this area, and then it's going to go to Mendot from them. And the governor and the whole ball of wax up there can hear from the city council of Wyndham. And I'm sure Steve will help me draft the letter. I think it's ridiculous. I think it's ridiculous. I sent this to the newspaper. Tiffany, I'm going to ask you, please send a copy of this to KDOM, too, as well. I don't know, it's their way or their highway. Council comments?
I think that's exactly what it is. It's like being held ransom, you know? Because we did what the people wanted to do. Now they're holding the city responsible. I don't think that is any way fair. And it certainly doesn't make any sense. Taking the stoplights out on Tenth Street, you know, yeah, they're old. They should probably be due, but who can afford to buy them? You know, I just, I, at that price there, if I went somewhere and I said, well, I'll give you fifty thousand dollars for that F three fifty Ford over here, and they said, yeah, then come back the next day and say, hey, oh, I can't do that. If I had a signed contract or any kind of a contract, I think I'd have that truck. There's representatives, you know, Hamilton was out there that time. Martin was there. And like I said earlier, you know, there's still some fifty billion dollars that the feds are holding for infrastructure that they haven't released. And that's been, what, three years ago? Is there any way we can? I don't know, but I think it's stupid.
I also think that they're holding the city of Wyndham at a ransom type of thing because we all agreed, and they agreed too when they were out there at the center, that we could put the stoplights in for a hundred and seventy-five thousand or something. That's what we agreed to. And then we asked for our four lane back. The citizens of Wyndham asked us to bring back our four lane, so we asked them to do that. Then all of a sudden, they jump it up to four hundred and twenty thousand. That's just not even right. And maybe it does go up that fast, but St. Peter, they had three different stoplights. They replaced that guarantee. They didn't pay that kind of money for that kind of, the stoplights up there. So we're just asking to be fair with what we got, and we did have some representatives here. And I'm sure we should and we must go above them. Don't even go to them, go above them, and let some of their bosses come down and ask what's going on here. Because that's not even fair to the citizens of Wyndham. Why, our tax dollars go into that, what they pay for this kind of stuff, and then they want us to pay more on top of it all? That's just not even right. But I would ask you to do, to, 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 and go above and go beyond and use a few naughty words if you have to, but get it done.
Jenny, can you beat that?
I have two parts to this. One, when they say that we have to comply with the design requirements that's set by the Federal Highway Administration, wasn't that something that was set years ago? It wasn't like it was just set in twenty-three or twenty-four. I believe that was how many years ago, right?
They were supposed to have been in compliance by twenty nineteen. Mendat shrugged their feet that long.
Yeah, so then I'm like, okay, so if you were supposed to, you know, this is on Mendat, was supposed to have this set by twenty nineteen, and you didn't, and now all of a sudden, oh, hey, let's, because there's this project and because Wyndham isn't cooperating, now we're going to adopt this what we should have done in twenty nineteen. So they have wiggle room. They don't have to, if they didn't adopt it from twenty nineteen till now, they could have waited another few months. I don't see that. Then the other thing is, you know, we also talked with them when Mary was here, too, about how much of the traffic was on which street, you know, compared to the highway? How much traffic is there compared to the city's street crossing? And they talked about, well, right now it's fifty-fifty is how we have to divide that payment. But Mary did say when she was here, in the future, that could change. That was something that was talked about as far as if it's more used on the highway, that the state's portion would be higher. But she said, well, that doesn't affect you now because we don't have that now. So it's like, how long can the signal last? Can we hold out until that changes on the state end to say, you know, look at the counts, and you have more on your straight highway than we have on our city's street? And so now you're paying more? Like, let's hurry up and enact that part of it so that their portion is higher.
The highway has ten to fifteen times as many vehicles as Tenth Street does. I've counted it several times, and that's where it falls. That's usually in the mornings. That's where my argument came in before, where I thought that's where the payment should be based on. But the council was very generous when they made that offer of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And out of the blue, they come back with four hundred and twenty thousand? That's crazy.
I wanted to refer something, too. It wasn't just two thousand and nineteen, it was two thousand and seventeen federal highway regulations that were imposed. And they didn't take action. So anyway, same difference, but they had a lot of time, as you said, Jenny. Tiffany, is it pertinent to this discussion? I have to ask, I just can't have public.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so just a couple of things that I think related are important for the council to know as this discussion is happening. In two thousand and fourteen, Mendat adopted their state highway improvement plan, which ran from two thousand and fourteen through two thousand and twenty-four. And that specifically lists the four lane expansion for Highway sixty to be, as being a locally desired project. They are going upon the study that they did, the corridor study in two thousand and twenty, which was impacted by COVID nineteen with limited response to that actual corridor study is what they are going off of. In terms of cooperation, I'd say that when this was a locally desired project in the first place, we are cooperating. We are showing that it is still locally desired to remain in place the way that it is. So I think that it's important that it mentions that we are cooperating. We've been a good partner. EDA did just approve a permanent or temporary easement, overlaying a permanent easement the EDA has at the sixth street intersection with Highway sixty to allow for the county's traffic signal project to go along. So when it comes to cooperation, we have been a good partner. We have been working with Mendat. We have been making them aware of this still being a locally desired project and cooperating on all other aspects. I think that's important to just clear up on that, too.
Thank you. One other thing that I just have to mention. I don't understand how they can only put stop signs on Tenth and not on the highway. Make their traffic slow down. What, if they don't pay, they're having us pay for half of it? Is what I'm saying. But now they want all their traffic to keep moving. They're acknowledging that they have more traffic. To your point. So I think Steve, in working with staff, will come up with a good letter that we can sign and send to Mendat. And I'm still going to follow up with a phone call, and I'm going to tell her what we are going to do. We're going to follow my phone call up with a letter. And it's going to go over her head. Actually, I would like a vote to show that I think we're all on the same page. If not, somebody jump in. But I think we're on the same page.
I would definitely make a motion that the mayor follow up with a phone call and a letter regarding this issue that we just talked about.
I'll second that. But I also think that it should go to the representatives at the same time.
No naughty words? I, no, I, unless, that's a different motion. That motion was made by Jenny and seconded by Jim to prepare a letter signed by the mayor and authorize that regarding the discussion the entire city council had this evening. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. I figured you would. Thank you for listening. And to our residents. Council's not, yeah, the entire council is not happy. And so your council is going to do something about this, or attempt to. And we got to say, will do. Contractor payment.
You know, they talk about this survey that they do. I would like them, you know, of course, they're off holidays, weekends, whatever. They must have a supervisor who could get seventy-five percent of his vacation time for any time he puts in down here. And I'd come on a holiday weekend. I mean, Fourth of July and this last Labor Day, it was backed up from the stoplight, Clearback to McDonald's. You know, you couldn't get across. And then when it did change, you might get one car that got across, and then it's back to normal.
Please do the contractor payment.
Jason's Co-Electric Superintendent. So we have the contractor payment. It's the tenth, I believe. So we are eighty-four percent completion. Plant's looking, it's coming together very nice. You can start to see the end coming. We should hopefully get our stacks, the exhaust stacks, up this week. They went up to Mankato, did a little two inches added on to them because they came out a little short. But so we're hoping to see them this week. And then we are still on schedule. And we are expecting a change order, which was planned because we will not know how much glycol, the coolant, to run the engines until all the piping is ran and everything. So there will be a change order, which we initially knew was coming. So they will be pumping, next week, they will be pumping a cleaner through the coolant pipes to clean out any rust or any contaminants that are in the piping. And then they'll measure that amount, and then they'll know how much coolant to purchase. So.
Any questions prior to the motion to approve? I would look for the motion.
I'd make the motion to approve payment. Pay request number ten to WillCon Construction.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the pay request number ten made by Marv and seconded by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else you'd like to discuss? Stick around for council comments.
Okay.
No? Thank you. Okay, we are at council comments. Who'd like to go first? Scott?
With this new school year and children out running around now, make sure we're watching all, because kids are brand new, young and old, different bicycles, electrical bicycles. Just be careful when you're watching kids coming to and from school and during their playtime after school because they're going to be out darkening between, they've got some great weather out there, so they're going to enjoy the time. So everybody just keep a vigil on there. And as far as some of my comments towards lights, I'm sorry about the naughty word part, but I mean, just if you feel that strongly about it, help us out, get ahold of some of our representatives. They have comment areas where citizens can get ahold of them and put a comment in there. Ask them, why are we being treated, mistreated like this? And I think we are being mistreated. But with that, check on your neighbors and make sure everybody's happy and treat Wyndham people like we do, like we take care of each other. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jenny?
I don't have anything tonight.
Jenny? Last call. Jim?
You can use them naughty words with letters and escriss and the so forth like that. You don't have to say the whole word, but I'm really disappointed. This is nonsense. This is stupid. But something can be done, I'm sure.
Marv?
Now that the flooding is over and everybody is repairing, law was damaged and all of that, a lot of the information that's getting passed out there with FEMA and all of that, we have to thank Tiffany. She's just done a wonderful job on that. I heard her on KDOM the other day and gives you all that information for that help that is out there. So thank you, Tiffany.
Steve?
Yep, just real quick. So we are in budget season. We are progressing through budget due to some staff changes early in the year and some short staffing over the summer. We kind of ran behind a little bit on the audit, so we're finishing up the audit, and you should have that shortly. That pushed us a little bit on our budget. We're supposed to set preliminary levy by council action no later than the thirtieth of September. This month, the meetings ran the second, which is, or third, what, third today? The third is today, the next meeting is the seventeenth. So that's fairly two meetings in kind of the first part of the month. Maybe to buy us another week to get the budget stuff done. I was just wondering if the council might consider a special meeting the week of the twenty-third just to set the preliminary levy. That would then buy us another week. We can probably work on it hard and get it scrunched in. Donna's nodding her head yes, but I don't want her here under extraordinary hours either. So if we could get a little extra time, that would be great. If not, if that doesn't work for your schedules, that's fine. But I just kind of wanted to see if you would be maybe open to having a fairly brief, hopefully, meeting, special meeting sometime over the week of the twenty-third.
Are you requesting on the twenty-third?
No, just some, just sometime. Just sometime that week, Mayor. I believe the twenty-fourth is the Tuesday.
Twenty-fourth? A regular Tuesday? Okay.
Be the fourth Tuesday of that month.
When is our joint power?
Joint government meeting is the fifth Monday.
Oh, okay. I thought we ended up with one extra day in there. Okay. Okay, consensus is to, or do you want a motion to do that?
Just if you're open with it, we'll see how we get on the budget and we'll.
Okay.
So if we can get it done and reasonable, we'll have it done to you and out for your regularly scheduled meeting. But if we need that extra week or so.
Maybe you need a part of that. I mean, it could go later in that week if you're getting close and.
No, certainly, yes.
Right.
Yep, we will report on it one way or the other for the next meeting. Either you'll see it in your packet or we'll set a firm special meeting date. But I just wanted to get it, kind of mark your calendars type of thing, just to see your availability and make sure somebody was on vacation, that kind of thing.
We'll go with consensus? Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that all you have, Steve?
Yeah, just one last shout-out to Denise, wishing her well on her retirement. Twenty-six years, great career. She was a couple other positions prior to Wyndham. So she's got her well-deserved time off, and congrats to her.
Sounds good. I'm going to do just one council comment, I think, tonight. There was, just for the council's information, and I don't, maybe some of you have heard, but the agreement that the city of Wyndham did for the electric department generally was the crypto mining building slash data center, whatever you want to call it, had a large turnout for the hearing. And the. And the recommendation of the planning commission, and maybe you all have seen the news or heard from people. But the recommendation then was for that to put a moratorium on the crypto mining and ask for a 60-day, that starts a 60-day moratorium. And so that's in place. There was a lot of public comment. A lot of the same type comments from a lot of people. I, I'm guessing 125 roughly. So, but that, so that project is up in the air yet. I, I thought it was a very good presentation. And then the comments, as I said, were a lot of similar ones, basically around sound. That's the majority of the comments. So just letting the council know, that's just an update, not taking one way or another on it. Okay. So with that, I think I'm good. If you guys are good, we're adjourned by unanimous consent.